I'll call this evening's meeting to order. If anyone's recording. See anybody? First item of business is Carl Clemmie, Clemmie Winship LLC, 20 Burgess Road Compliance Report.
I want to inform the board about where we are in the enforcement of the special permit on the land clearing for, under zoning bylaws, section 1214. The land that we're talking about is at Winship Avenue owned by Clemco LLC. And the problem is that the requirements of the special permit have not been met. The special permit was issued after the fact of clearing five acres approximately. The permit was issued January 14th, 2019. And the appeal period had passed and the notice was issued on February 26th, 2019 to proceed. Text, email was sent regarding enforcement, sent to the owner on July 1st, 2020. Noted that the site did not have the ground cover as required by condition number five. Mr. Clemmie responded, and this is Bill Clemmie. Mr. Clemmie responded on July 10th that he is trying to get something to grow. On July 27th, sent a follow-up message saying that as a representative of the planning board, I'm asking you to regrade as needed to match the proposed grades or within six inches of those grades, to reseed in water or hydroseed in water to obtain a complete ground cover within this growing season. Mr. Clemmie responded that the heat wave is making growing difficult. A message again was sent on September 2nd, 2020, asking to grade the site, put down a layer of topsoil and hydroseed. Mr. Clemmie responded on September 2nd, 2020, stating that he would address this as soon as possible. Mr. Clemmie suggested that grading was not allowed by special permit conditions. I sent an email on October 1st, 2020, asking for completion of the ground cover this growing season. I met with Bill and Carl Clemmie on October 7th, 2020, to discuss the email I'd sent regarding restoration of the property. Bill Clemmie offered to put a fast-growing, late-season seed mix on bare spots. This is a temporary measure as the original order still stands. He was notified by email on October 13th, 2020, that the seeding he offered was not sufficient. He stated he had covered more areas than suggested and asked to meet with the planning board on November 23rd, 2020. Any questions?
I have pictures of the property if anyone is interested. I took them today.
Sure, I haven't been out there in a month or two.
So this is, this is it, it's down off of Great Neck. This is the area that was, that is in question, right here. It's all cleared. I've got seven pictures. I've got three from right here, looking this direction here, here, and here. Then I have three from right here, looking here, here, and here. And I have one from right here, looking out this way. So this is, I'm standing on the road. Can people see that at all? There's natural stuff that's grown in, and there's a lot of bare spots. This is looking across, looking straight north. This is looking to the east. This is on the side road. This is looking south. This is looking east. This is looking north. And then there's one picture I wanted to show that, again, with all the bare spots that are out there. And it's being, it looks like it's being used for storage. There's three trailers out there now. So that'll give you some flavor. Okay?
Almost looks like.
Say again?
I said it almost looks like he's just waiting for Mother Nature to take over.
Yeah.
And do, and do the job for him.
That was my take.
Did you discuss this with council at all?
No, I haven't, not talked with council yet on this.
Typically, what would next step be?
Uh, zoning enforcement officer to file a, an order against the property.
And you need this board's approval or recommendation to do something like that?
Authorization to proceed.
So I'd make a motion that you're authorized to proceed?
I'd second that.
Discussion? I mean, if we wait till November, the growing season will be behind us.
I think that's the plan. That's what it looks like.
Motion's been made and seconded to enforce, uh, direct the building commissioner to enforce the.
The special permit.
The special permit, about what we're asking for?
Yeah.
Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are there, are there fines involved in, in, uh, once it's turned over to the, uh,
Would you come to the mic?
Ron Ennis, Burgess Point Road. As you guys know, this is a complete mess for the, I mean, the neighborhood just got ruined by this. And I don't think we have to go into it in any detail. It was a beautiful piece of woods in a gorgeous neighborhood, and this guy has just devastated this, this area and done nothing about it and just laughs in everyone's face, including the town, frankly. Bottom line, I'm sure, knowing his past, I'm sure if we start, if the town starts doing any kind of a penalty for this, you'll see him move his, his backside pretty quickly. That's what he usually does. He just pushes as far as he, he'll push the towns as far as he can go. And at the point, to the point where everyone gets pissed off and he, he just plays his games. And then, once the games are, are all played, he, he'll, he'll just continue to default on everything you do unless you start fining him. And if there's a way that the enforcement officer could put some fines in place, maybe he'll do something about it. But it needs to get rectified. It's just an absolute shame in that kind of a neighborhood to have it ruined by him. That's all I have to say.
We don't have the ability to do that, but I think if the enforcement officer doesn't get any satisfaction, it will go to fourth district court. I think that's the chain of command, isn't it?
Yes, it's district court after this. And there are penalties for, for non-compliance with zoning.
Oh.
So is that, is that the route that he's gonna take?
The, the zoning enforcement officer will notify him formally that he's in violation of his special permit. And normally, I would think he would give him a short amount of time to rectify the situation, then he would be summoned to court. I think that's the usual order of progression.
But as you said, it's, you know, if the growing season's only about this long right now.
Yeah, here's the gentleman, George.
What's that?
You gotta come to the mic if you're gonna speak.
That's fine.
Anyway, if there's no more discussion for the board, you can ask a question if you, yeah. Well, just, this isn't a public hearing, so if you can keep it brief, so we can keep moving, that would be great.
Brief as I can. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, uh, Mr. Chairman. I think you need to talk more about item five under the order of conditions. There is so much more going on there that needs to be rectified and does not conform with your order of conditions and with the, the objectives that you established preceding those orders and that, in that, in that finding that you published. And I'd like to call your attention to those if I can. And I think that if you're gonna take action on the seeding, it's a lot more than seeding.
Well, it'll be on the whole order of conditions.
Sorry?
It will be on the entire conditions of approval.
Well, I haven't heard anything from Mr. Buckland regarding some of the additional things that I believe need, attention needs to be paid to. And, and I want to be sure it gets on the record so that when you do take additional action, you do it in each appropriate step of the way. Preceding your conditions, you, you set out in that, in that publication, the objectives that the planning board seeks in taking order, taking action with these orders and conditions. The very first one, A, says will not advert, that this completed project will not adversely affect the neighborhood as an open field. Well, let's, let's think about that. Already, in Mr., in Mr. Buckland's letter to Mr. Clemmie, he's, he's addressed the adverse impacts of stormwater runoff, that needs to be mentioned and taken care of, and of air quality, dust control. I mean, I've been living there for four years with this conditions, and I live exactly across the street from this field. And I, nobody in the neighborhood suffers the adverse effects of this project, Mr. Clemmie's project than I have. This letter from Mr. Buckland went out on July 27th. In it, it says, um, this is gonna be placed on the board, on the agenda of the planning board to consider further action. Well, we've gone from July to almost November to decide what that further action is. So that means that while your order of conditions went out in January of 2019, a year and a half, maybe two years following the destruction of that property, you didn't, you're not gonna take action until the end of this growing season. That means we've, and, and that means that we've gone through the spring of 2019, the summer of 2019, the fall of 2019, the spring of this year, the summer of this year, and the fall of this year. And no action has been taken, and the adverse effects that we're suffering down there continue. And it appears now, without any question, that we're running out of season, and we're gonna go into a third year of this. And if any of you were living where I live, you wouldn't have put up with it for five minutes, and I've been putting it up with it for two or three years and more. And I, I think I have every right to insist that, that more than just what you've already talked about takes place. Mr. Buckland's letter says fixed within this growing season. The 2019 letter, order of conditions, said that when conditions are appropriate, which was the spring of 2019, and nothing was done for that whole year. And now this year, you're saying to him in July, um, that it has to be done within this growing season, which now can't be done. So I don't wanna talk about Mr. Clemmie, I wanna talk about the town of Wareham. Town of Wareham is not following up, in my opinion, as it should in its responsibilities to uphold its laws, its bylaws, its orders of conditions. And, and I'm referring, of course, to this, this particular case. What other adverse effects is that neighborhood feeling over there? We've created a wind tunnel. That, the destruction of that five acres has created a wind tunnel. That wind tunnel is knocking down trees. When you get a strong northeast wind on five or six occasions since the destruction of that forest, it's taken down neighborhood, neighbors' trees. Okay? The Audubon Society lost a mess of big trees. And every time those trees come down, they take out the power. You wanna talk about an adverse effect? All of Burgess Point, from Great Neck Road to the, to the canal, lose their power. We're all without power for a period of time. The police department has to park a car there to protect against what live wires that are laying on the road time and time again. The power company practically has a full-time job there. Anytime there's, there's a wind, a strong northeast wind that tunnels through that, that wind tunnel, as I call it. And, and that's costing a lot of people money, inconvenience. It's costing the town a lot of money with the police department and so forth. Another thing, you look at those pictures, all you see on those pictures, besides bare spots, is invasive species in a field of weeds that are growing seeds that that wind tunnel is gonna distribute throughout the neighborhood, especially in my yard. Never mind when the pollen season comes, and it almost looks like a forest fire coming out of that field, drifting across my road as if I don't have enough pollen on my own property. And, and it's, it's a health factor as well. And you better look at it as a health factor as well. I've reached the end of my, my patience on this whole thing. And depending on what comes out of this meeting tonight, I'm not gonna live with it any longer. I'm telling you, I'm not gonna live with it any longer. And I'm no longer gonna depend on the town of Wareham to fix my problem because they have to demonstrate, they haven't demonstrated yet that they can do it in two years. Okay? Two years. The aesthetics, how about the aesthetics? How does that, isn't that an adverse effect of the, of the neighborhood? You taking a beautiful piece of forest land and make it look like junk? Look what he's done with it. He's now taking, he's taking waste, agricultural waste, trees, limbs, leaves, and now just depositing them from other sites, from his own property and other properties, onto this as a dumping ground. That's not what, that's aesthetic. That's not what the, what your, your rules intend to happen. He's got three trailers on there that violate the rules of the town of Wareham. He's been told, I don't know, I think Ken told him maybe over a month ago, maybe more than that, about that. He still hasn't removed them. He doesn't care. And why doesn't he care? Because he doesn't fear the town of Wareham. He has no concerns about any follow-up. He'll drag you to the, to the bitter end until you're forced to take action, whether it's going to court and whatever it is, it's gonna cost the town more money, more aggravation. And the discomfort of living in that, under those conditions in that neighborhood will continue. They've gone on for four years now, they're, they're gonna go on probably another year at least. So, and then under, under B, under the objectives, you say that you, you want this to be an appropriate use of the land, at least, at least temporarily, an open area. Well, dumping junk on it is not an appropriate, um, use of the land, and parking trailers is not an, an appropriate use of, of that land. Using that as a dump is not appropriate. Try living across it. And that dump includes eelgrass, by the way. And there's probably a violation there. Ken looked at it. He is known to rake out eelgrass to improve his beach in this area. I'm not saying, maybe it washed up on his beach, maybe he dug it up. But somebody ought to look into it. Are any roots attached to that eelgrass? I mean, that's one way of telling. I'm not gonna walk out on that property, but, but somebody should, should, and somebody should contact the conservation committee about it. Where's the drainage that you've talked about? The stumps were removed, but the roots are still, a lot of roots are still around there that need to be cleaned up. So, in addition to the dumping of the waste, and, and, and your, 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 your order of conditions, talk about the road coming in there. He tore a, a big stump, when he did his stumping, right beside the road. It created a big hole in the road. Your order of conditions say any damage that road shall be done. When? Immediately, immediately. And, and the town should be contacted to oversee the, the repair of that, of that situation. Did he ever call you before he repaired it? All right, he didn't call, so there's one violation. Secondly, how did he fix it? He put sand in there, beach sand, filled it up, couple rainstorms, little bit of traffic, it was gone. For over a year, we had to live with that damn thing that was, that was, it was a hazard to, to vehicles. And finally, after over a year, I couldn't take it any longer, I hired somebody to fix it. So I fixed what he was supposed to fix immediately, after living with the consequences of his damage. And town didn't get a call on that like you were supposed to. So call his attention to that when you go after him. He violated this thing just on that alone. Does it, does it comply with, the other, the other objective is comply with a zoning? He has put on that land, on that site, a sign. Signs are, is a, is a crude handmade sign that says, nobody can go down that road except residents, which is a damn lie and not true, and not the way that road's been used for over a hundred years. That sign is on that site, so I think it becomes, and, and I'm pretty sure it's in violation of the town bylaws. I've called it attention to the town administrator, to Mr. Buckland, now to you guys. That sign doesn't belong there, and that should be removed immediately. Trailers are an illegal use. He's already been told about that and done nothing about it. I mean, how many times do you have to be ignored? What's it take to get Mr. Buckland to get his mad enough to, to, to do his job and enforce what needs to be enforced and bring it back to you? And get the authority, the proper authority, to proceed and take care of these things? This is crazy. And I'm, I'm telling you, we've reached the end. Better do something, and it better be serious, and it better get results, because if it doesn't, I will take whatever appropriate action I have to do to protect the value of my property, of my neighborhood, my health, and, and everything else associated with the adverse effects of, of this, of this project. Before he, he's out there the other day with a couple bags of seed, throwing a little bit of seed out there. Please, what is the grading? Item five says it's gonna be graded to six inches or whatever the language is. He hasn't done that yet. If he gets around to doing that when? This year? He's not gonna do it this year. He's just gonna jerk you around until you do whatever you gotta do, whatever you can do, whenever you decide to get serious on this issue. I don't know if any of you, how many of you have been down there and seen this? But go down there, look at it, and tell me you tolerate it if you lived across the street from it. Tell me you would do that, because I know you wouldn't. Well, I, I don't, I'm not gonna do it anymore either. I've been as patient as any person can be. I'm a good citizen, I play by the rules, I play, you know, you know, and I've gotta live across the street from that? I'm telling you, this meeting better result in, and it's too late for this year, so I, I know we're gonna go a third year on this thing. And that's on you guys. I'm sorry. I'm not gonna talk about Clemmie, I'm talking about you guys. You let him cut those trees down, your inspectors knew they were coming down, they knew what the law was, they said that it was gonna be an agricultural thing, and he had a waiver, which he did not have. He destructed the whole five acres, and then later I get calls apologizing because we forgot that about this particular bylaw that we have, that he violated. And so what did you do? Well, now he wants to pull the stumps out. Well, yeah, you're gonna come in now, and, and you started the, you started the paperwork process for him to be permitted, and you permitted him retroactively to do what he did illegally. I mean, that's, that's, that's why I get nuts about this, that's why the neighbors get nuts about this. Where the hell, who's watching out for us? We're paying our taxes, we're doing what we have to do. You got two environmental sites that are but that site, the Audubon Society and the Coalition, Buzzard Bay Coalition. Beautiful people in projects that are protecting the environment, adding beauty to our neighborhood. And this guy, right between those two organizations, creates that dump, that mess? I mean, I don't know what else I can say.
Before you leave, I, I didn't get your name and.
John Deekus, I'm sorry.
And where do you live?
I'm across the street, 16, yeah, 16, yeah, that's my house, right there.
On the north side?
Yeah, you see, you see the driveway right across from where the.
Your mouse up, Richard.
Yeah, right there, that's my house. When that wind blows all that stuff, you look into this field here in, in the spring, it looks like a forest fire. First time I saw it, I thought there was a fire there. I mean, it was just unbelievable, the mixture of dust and pollen. You have no idea. It's, it's awful. So, anyway.
Appreciate your input.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, John. Next item is approval not required plan for Dos Amigos.
Would you like to speak on this?
As I said, it's not a public hearing. If you can, if you can keep it brief, fine.
The motion wasn't voted on.
Oh, yeah, I do have to vote on the motion. That's always helpful.
My name's Steve Riggi, I live at Nine Widows Cove. I've been living up in Burgess Point for almost 30 years now. The day before Mr. Clemmie started to clear cut that property, we were in touch with the zoning enforcing officer and, you know, with, you know, we were told that it's okay, it's within, you know, the bounds of agricultural exemption. Since then, I've been, you know, basically a concerned neighbor in that area and just watching the progress that, you know, we've made. And I'm on speaking terms with, you know, Carl. I'm also on speaking terms with, you know, the abutters and pretty much everyone else down there. And I've come to each one of these meetings with an open mind, trying to understand what the process is, how we go from illegally cutting a field, way in excess of the zoning bylaws, and we gave an exemption, fine, you know, that's, that's something in the past, you can't put the trees back. Got it. But then we ended up, you know, discussing, well, what do we do with the property after that? And we came up, over a period of time, Ken, we've met a couple of times, tried to meet with town administrator, and, you know, town administrator wouldn't talk with us. We've talked to conservation commission, they wouldn't talk with us. That's fine, okay, I get it. We finally get some conditions that need to, you know, require Mr. Clemmie to improve that area, to at least get it to a standard lot. That was a year and a half ago. I've been watching, and I've been talking to Carl, and what are you doing, and, you know, how's it coming and whatnot? And, you know, I think Mr. Deekus summed it up very well. Mr. Clemmie's hasn't done anything. He hasn't fulfilled, you know, the requirements as a responsible neighbor, as a responsible citizen of Wareham. He's been, he, it's, it's, it should have been just a consideration as a considerate neighbor. Well, okay, so sometimes that doesn't work. But that came down to, you know, the requirements from, you know, this board, and it still hasn't worked. The growing season's very short season. It, well, actually, it's not a very short season. It's anywhere from, Ken, what, what is the growing season for, you know, replanting an area like that?
Depends on the temperature of the soils.
What months? You can be, you can be general.
I'd say.
March through November?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would too. And so he's had two growing seasons now to attend to the requirements, and he hasn't done that. And what, okay, I get it, some people are a little more difficult. Well, that's the reason why these boards are put in place and the requirements are put in place. Well, he's, he's chosen to ignore that. I get it, no problem, he's, he's that type of personality, I get it. My problem is, though, and it's becoming more of a problem, is that you have a responsibility, you have a responsibility, this board has a responsibility to us as citizens, to enforce the bylaws, to enforce the conditions, and you haven't done that. And you're now talking about, well, we'll get in touch with council, and, you know, in a couple more weeks, there'll, something will happen. We're not even sure what you're gonna talk to council about. John is trying to coach you on that. And we're not really sure what that's going to entail, but we do know for sure, it's gonna push us outside the growing season. So if Mr. Clemmie does follow through on the grading requirements and then the reseeding requirements, he's gonna destroy that lot yet again. And without ample teeth in this next, you know, attempt that he makes and some requirements that he needs to meet, my guess is that maybe that seed just won't germinate. Something's gonna happen, and we're gonna be looking at that lot in the same condition for another year. So I'm looking at you because this has been your, your requirement, this is your responsibility, but I'm looking at the board to put some teeth into this. And I'm not doing it from, you know, from a neighbor who's, you know, who's upset with a neighbor. I'm doing it from, you know, a citizen that's upset. I'm doing it from, uh, you know, a citizen that's upset with the government that we have in this town. This is your job, and it's not getting done. And what makes it even worse is it's been construed, this issue's been construed, and it's been documented from town officials as a neighborhood dispute. There couldn't be anything more wrong than this being a neighborhood dispute. The issue is, if the town enforced its bylaws, if this board enforced it, if you enforced it, the town administrator enforced it, if Alan Slaven enforced it, or gotten behind it, then it's not neighbor against neighbor. It should have been the town requiring Clemmie to do the right thing. You haven't done it up to now. I sure hope to see something come out of it real soon. And again, it's not a neighborhood dispute. This should be town saying, hey, you didn't meet the zoning requirements, you didn't meet the conditions, you better get it done now. So, just my two cents.
Thank you. And as I was reminded, I don't think I asked for a vote on that previous motion, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved unanimously. Now we'll get to the A and R for Dos Amigos Realty, Squirrel Island Road. Is there anyone here to...
Yes.
For the record, Sam Iamelli, on behalf of Dos Amigos Realty. The subject property here is shown as Lot 1009 on Assessors Map 74, which has frontage along Squirrel Island Road. We are, we are looking to take this parcel and subdivide into three lots, all with adequate frontage and lot area for the R60 zoning district, as defined in the Wareham bylaws. We are defining a fifty-foot wide layout through the property to tie in with the remainder of the layout for Squirrel Island Road. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are you the engineer on the property? Are you the engineer?
Yes.
Okay.
How did you define the location of Squirrel Island Road right away?
Um, it is previously shown on a plan that was endorsed back in 2003. I have the plan here in front of me.
While you're doing that, um, I need to ask a question. There's several comments in here, that no known layout exists for Squirrel Island Road?
Well, that's why I'm asking.
What, but what does that mean? I mean, I'm, I'm looking at maps here that had, that show it.
Means the legal description is, is undefined, is what he's saying.
If we go look at maps on record, we won't see Squirrel Island Road?
You won't see a legally defined Squirrel Island Road, you'll see a pathway.
Okay.
That area of Squirrel Island Road that you've depicted is frontage. Do you plan to create that, or is that where the actual traveled way is?
Um, the dash line shown is the edge of traveled way currently. It's approximately sixteen to eighteen feet wide traveled path. The self, the southern bold line we have there is the edge of the property that we currently own. So we, the dash line, fifty feet adjacent to that is the line we're defining for the opposite side of Squirrel Island Road.
So you intend to build a roadway to create frontage?
We are creating frontage along that road, correct?
Be very clear here. He asked you if you're going, if you're building additional road?
Are we building additional road? No, I'm sorry.
Have you been down that road, George?
Yeah. Isn't this the, the property where the solar farm tried to go in?
That's right.
That looks familiar.
I drove, I drove it today. Lot of nice homes down there.
There is, yeah.
It's a nice piece of property, I, I don't doubt.
Did you take pictures of this one?
I did.
I have a few site pictures as well.
Would you like to share? You want to see them? So this is from, here's Squirrel Island Road, here's Fairing Hill Road up behind the mall on Main Street. This is, what I'm going to show you is taken from right here. Right here, we're going to go north, okay? I apologize, I had it sitting on my dash, and there was a lot of vibration. Halfway through it, I picked it up and held it in my hand, but you can see it's a, it's better than a lot of the private roads in town. It's, um, it looked like that the local people that live there maintain it on any potholes that come up, you know, from, from weather and water, because they fill it with three-quarter stone, and it's, it's in good shape, there's only a couple potholes on it.
If you...
Can I, you want to stop it?
If you, I don't know, oh, you're showing it again, but if you keep going back to Looks like you're repeating the...
I did a little bit, I thought you wanted to show...
Well, if you look right there to the left, I think at one point, that's where, that alleyway you see there was where Squirrel, Squirrel Island Road was located.
Well, that's, well, that's, I think that's much further south than right here. I'll, I'll show you when we finish this. There is a road that takes a hard right as you're driving south, and, and that is still Squirrel Island Road, and it looks like it try, at one point was going to continue over to a road that can, that connects to Mackey Way, I believe.
Jeez, how fast are you driving?
I was driving very slow, and that was the first thing I noticed. I go, man, it looks like I'm going a hundred miles an hour, doesn't it? I wasn't, I was driving slow. So if you, to your point, George, um, I started right, I started right here.
Well, if you look on the map, you'll see a way over here that, that these properties front on. And that's what you were seeing there, that was at one point, that was...
You see here, though?
That was the traveled way.
Here's Squirrel Island Road at the, at the very south end of that strip. I started here and went north. If you went further south, Squirrel Island Road goes all over here, except there's a gap right there to Mackey Way.
Well, I think it, at one time went all the way out to County Road, I think.
Really? Anyway, the point I wanted to make sure the board saw that, even if it's a road that doesn't, isn't defined, it's, uh, one of the better private roads in town.
Well, they just, they just, uh, put reprocess on it, probably in the last two years.
Say again?
Reprocessed. That road used to be a heck of a lot worse than what it is now.
Did the town do it?
No. The, uh, it was done for the sewer, uh, field, and it was built on the, uh, western side.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No problem.
Was it reprocessed or paved?
Reprocessed.
Was it millings or?
Yeah.
Yeah, millings.
What are millings?
There's a, that's pavement, it was taken from the road.
Asphalt?
Asphalt, and then it repacks down pretty well.
Town's been using that a lot lately.
Because initially, way back, that road used to go to Whitehead Sandpit. It was a well-traveled gravel road, they used to grade it all the time, till about twenty, what did they move on, Charlie, twenty years now? If not more.
Whitehead's pit?
Yeah.
Done all of that?
Been quite a while, you know, time goes quick. And, uh, you know, before in the olden days, you have a heavy rain, all the gravel would wash out of it, and it was pretty bad. That's still a privately owned road, I believe. And I know quite a bit of it, the portion, because I noticed when you go down here, where you're squeezing your lots in there, where the road is shown and where your frontage is.
Charlie, are you familiar with the road?
Yep.
Um, what would your opinion of the condition of it be?
It's been a while since I was actually down there. Last time I drove in, it wasn't in bad shape, but...
I think that's only one issue. I think there's more to this plan than just that.
Want to share?
Sure. Um, if you look at the boundary of the property, for Lot One, it looks like it's got ninety-two point fourteen feet on, I guess, the westerly side of the existing dirt road. Uh, the next lot has one fifty-nine plus twenty-five, so it's got about a hundred and eighty-four feet on that side. The next lot, which would be Lot Three, doesn't appear to have any frontage at all on that road. If it does, it's just a diagonally piece. So it appears what's being done by this plan is to create layout lines which are, fifty feet, yeah, fifty feet apart, which would be a, a common layout distance for a road, uh, so that they could claim the frontage on the easterly side of that fifty-foot layout. The problem with doing that is that when you create a layout, you do it by subdivision, you don't do it by an A and R. You can debate the issue whether or not the existing Squirrel Island Road is sufficient construction and width, line and grade, to allow these three lots to be done, but you still got the subdivision that you need to create in order to get the frontage the way that they've defined it on this plan. So I think that there are those two issues, and for that reason, my recommendation would be, you cannot use this plan as an A and R.
So one of the things I don't understand, to your point, is if, if there's no legal boundary defined as the road, um, come on. First, thank you. How do I do this?
At the top there.
Okay, up there on the screen, this is, this is the, the western border of Lot Number One.
Correct.
Why isn't that shown against what we know to be Squirrel Island Road?
Because that's not where his ownership is.
Pardon me?
That's not where his ownership is. The line that he's shown is the limit of his ownership.
That's, is that right?
That's correct, yep. There is another parcel, actually, between that line and the, uh, the roadway there.
That sliver is owned by someone else, Richard. So he can't go out to that.
I get you.
I mean, it would be a lot easier if Squirrel Island Road followed lot lines or vice versa, but...
Well, I got a similar situation on, at my house. The road on the, on the map of the town, it has a jog in it, but there's no jog, in reality.
So your opinion, Charlie, is that he should be before us with a subdivision plan?
That's my opinion.
To create the layout for the road.
And how does that, and, and how does that change it, Charlie?
The only way that layouts be, the only way that layouts get created is through the subdivision process, which means a public hearing, abutters get notified, plan gets presented to you, and you either say that the conditions of the physical road is adequate, or you can set conditions upon which they have to improve it to some degree. You can decide how those, how far you want to go with those conditions of construction.
I'm sorry, but you talked about the only way we can do layout changes?
The only way that a layout gets created is through the subdivision process of a public hearing. You lay out streets as a planning board.
Laying out a street, I get that part.
That's what you're doing by this plan. That's what you would be doing by this plan, by defining the easterly side of a fifty-foot way that doesn't exist today. Those heavy dash lines that he's showing there, where he says, frontage on right of way, a hundred and eighty feet, frontage on right of way, one eighty feet, frontage on the right of way, two forty, two oh eight. At this point in time, they're just imaginary lines. They don't exist. So the only way that you get to create them is to go through the public hearing process, which is spelled out under Chapter Forty-One, and you go through that with, with the advertising, uh, notice to abutters, uh...
What you're really talking about, though, is creating lines of the, of the, of a road.
That is, that's correct, that's correct.
I understand why that would be subdivision process.
And why they're doing it is because that's the only way that they can get the required frontage that they need to satisfy zoning for building purposes.
I get it.
And it's a legitimate way to do it. I have no problem with, with creating it that way, but you can't do it through an A and R, you need to do it through a subdivision.
You can't, you can't condition it A and R.
Understood.
And basically...
So, so there are two things. One thing would be the subdivision to create the layout lines, and then the second thing would make a determination, since what they're showing you is the westerly boundary of the layout, at least for a portion of it, uh, is the existing way. When you get to Lot Three, there's very little, if anything, that, uh, you can gain access to Lot Three from on the existing Squirrel Island Road. There's only a little tiny triangle there, right in the corner. So perhaps something would have to be done to improve a portion of Squirrel Island Road to give it the adequate actual physical frontage that they need.
Lot One wouldn't have enough frontage either, would it?
Um, it would have the frontage, if you add up ninety-one point five nine and eighty-eight point four one, that gives you a hundred and eighty feet on that dash line. That's all you need, is on that side of the road. But then you would have to con, consider whether or not the amount of Squirrel Island Road, which is within those lines, is adequate for construction, that you can turn off of to get into the lot.
Yeah. Can I make a comment that, um, two years ago, a plan was endorsed for our abutter that, which looks like they had done exactly the same thing which we had done in creating frontage along the right of way, when the road passes through the parcel. Plan prepared by G I F Engineering, endorsed May fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
If, in fact, that took place, that could have been an error, but that doesn't mean we need to repeat it. I'm inclined to, to agree with Charlie.
Should we draw this and refile? We have to deny it so it doesn't become constructive, correct?
Well, you have twenty-one days from the date that it's submitted to this board to render a decision.
You have to make a finding that it's a subdivision if you don't want to endorse it as an A and R.
Right, we, we don't want to endorse it as an A and R.
So you have to find it as a subdivision.
Okay.
Right off the bat, just deny it, period, and that's it, and let them go back to the drawing board and do it right, because, uh, that's how we... Because, uh, that's how we get into these predicaments.
Well, you could simply withdraw it at this time and come back with a subdivision plan.
Yep.
In order to give the applicant some direction, as a part of the, the subdivision submittal that he does, would you be looking for any particular details on Square Island Road itself? On the construction of it, width, grade, that sort of thing?
I, I think what we should do on Square Island Road is, uh, see who owns that sliver in there, or that, what is that lot? S one B? And at one time, when that, just recently, the solar company came before us, the solar plant, and all that land was all frontage to somebody else. All of a sudden, somebody did some creative engineering here. And I know for a fact, when you get down towards the end of this property, Mr. Perry claims he owns the road. And like I said, I think we're digging up a, a old grave here.
Well, I think Mike, they've, they've shown the property the way that they feel that their boundaries exist.
Yeah.
There may be other issues there, but, um, I would think that this plan would only pertain to the three lots in that portion of Square Island Road.
There was, there was an issue when, uh, the subdivision on the Whiteheads had rights to pass and repass across the road, and then later on supposedly it was reversed, that they have no rights on that road.
Well, again, if, if somebody wants to say that they don't have any rights to, um, to access lot two at any place along Square Island Road, then wouldn't that be a matter for them to take up with the owner of, of lot two? Or lot one, two, and three, as, as it's combined here?
Yeah.
I don't see how that would impact what he's trying to do, which is to create three lots. It's just a matter of how's he gonna create it? And can he do it in compliance with the subdivision control law?
Yeah, okay.
It, it looks like the intent at some point was Square Island Road was supposed to be straight.
Yeah.
But I think when the lots were created along the westerly side, they kind of established the...
Well, example, George, look, look at the top of Square Island Road. They own to the middle of the road. And then there's a property line, that straight line that comes all the way down there, was totally excluded from that.
That all depends on how the, how the deeds are, are laid out. For example, the Debonese lot and the Gomes lot, which is partly on Fairing Hill Road, they could very easily say they go by the road, which means it's gonna go by the center line. The same thing with Alexander, uh, goes by the road. And that's the reason why you see the lot line down the center.
Right, then after...
Once you get beyond that, I think everything to the west of that long, straight line that cuts across it
Yep.
was all one piece at one time.
Yes.
Because if you look, it's, uh, uh, S two A, fifty-three A, S one B,
Sorry, which, which one?
S four, S five.
About, um,
All these lots here
Yep.
are all part of one piece of land at one time. And all, all butted this boundary, which is to the east of Square Island Road, where it sort of meanders in and out of that area. It's just an old road and people over time have used it as access.
Yeah.
And this is a particular case where their lot line actually crossed the road in two places. But they don't have frontage enough on the road to create the three lots without creating a subdivision.
And I would question this because when these were created, they went to the center line in order to get frontage and we called them on that, and now it shows it going to the center line.
The ones on the top, George, the ones on the bottom don't.
Yeah.
They go to the edge of the road or less than the edge of the road.
I thought it was these two here.
I think, I think as I recall, when those lots were created, the S lots here, my memory not be a hundred percent, but it seems to me that what they were doing was claiming frontage along Square Island Road. But they ran those lines parallel to it as if they were laid-out lines, but they never laid those lines out, as I remember it, and they didn't have to at that time. In this particular case, you've got frontage that doesn't comply with the zoning at all. Now, now you've got to somehow create that frontage to get to Square Island Road. The only way you can do it is what, um, uh, this applicant's engineer has done to show on the plan, which I think is the correct way to do it. It's just that I don't believe it, it falls under an A and R in this case, because you're laying out new straight lines which would become the frontage lines. It's not the center line of Square Island Road that was the frontage anymore. Entirely different.
But isn't that what these S lots did back in the day?
No. No, as a matter of fact, if you look on the lot, that long sliver that, that Mike Baptiste was talking about is a part of the property that's on the west side. That's why it's got an S number.
S one A one there?
Yeah, S one B. That was all a part of this property that was on the other side of the road. And the road went, the road went through there, but they carved up the westerly side and used the center line basically as the frontage. But in this particular case, the road leaves the property before you can get that, before you can claim it. So the only way you can do it is to create new frontage. If all of Square Island Road went through the combined lots one, two, and three, and went through at a sufficient distance to where you could get the hundred and eighty feet along that road, you might be in a different situation. But that's not the case here. Because the boundary went to the other side, and now they're only able to use a short distance for each one.
Sure.
None of which, well, I guess maybe the middle one does, but the other, the other two lots don't have sufficient frontage.
Just a point, just a point of clarification, assume for a minute that S one B, the long sliver
Yep.
was part of, um, the, the property that we're looking at?
No, it was part of the property on the, if you look at the plan on the south side.
Assume the sliver wasn't there. Assume that lot one butted up against Square Island Road. I'm just asking for educational...
No, this, all this property along here was one parcel.
Understood.
At one time. That's all. That's all I'm saying.
Tie that.
I, I, I get you. No, I, I'm not arguing. I'm trying to get, I'm just throwing a hypothetical out there. If lot one...
Which lot one? This one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Actually did touch what we know to Square Island Road to be, that that sliver property wasn't there. Then, then it'd be an entirely different situation, wouldn't it?
I would assume that they would try and lay the lots out in a different configuration to take advantage of that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I'm just trying to understand is all.
Yeah, I didn't fully understand what you were saying about lot one, that's all.
South westerly corner, how, how are you gonna connect that frontage to any piece of Square Island Road?
Um, Square Island Road is, we have a note that, um, it will be connected to the previous shown road on Plan Book forty-six, eight twenty-five, page eight twenty-five. Um, and that has bearings and distances for the sidelines of the property. And shows where that ties into our property.
But it looks as though you can't tie it in without crossing somebody else's property.
Lot S eight is the one you'd have to cross at the end, that little triangle?
That's, that's what I'm looking at, is how...
That little sliver you're talking about, I think, George, is undefined. I don't think it belongs to lot S eight, from what I'm looking at. I don't know who it belongs to. I, I see your point. What they'd have to do would be to create a, sort of a, a road to the left off of lot two to run in and then stop somewhere on their boundary. Because you can't pull it back. You'd be, like you say, you'd be on someone else's land, but I don't know what that is. I don't know who owns it.
This corner?
Yes.
Says barrows, but...
Yeah, but you see the way that, also you see that line goes, it goes from here to here to here, and I don't know who owns this.
Oh, all right. Well, that, I assume that's where the road is now, right?
That's, we assume...
Dash line is where the road is.
The, the little dashes. So you mean in between the lot line and the, and the dashes that exist?
Yeah, there's nothing there. There's no butters name that we don't know who owns it.
That almost looks like it at one time was part of Square Island Road, but I don't know how you...
Yeah.
I don't know how you get from there to what exists today. So that would be the recommendation at this time is to withdraw it and file it as a subdivision plan.
Okay, and just so I'm clear, the only way to possibly subdivide is to, we'd have to create a road, create frontage?
Subdivision, that's what it looks like you've suggested here.
Okay.
Say you control most of the property, but...
Charlie, in your opinion, if this is attempted through a subdivision process, is it doable? I, I know, I'm just asking a high-level, I, I, I know I put you on the spot there.
That's a board vote.
That's... That's a question I don't like to answer.
Feel free to decline if you, if that, if that, I understand.
The, that same corner...
If he comes in with the proper information, then you can consider it.
Is that an old?
And I, I think that's all I should say.
Or is that something created for the survey or a recent survey?
Um, the rebar
Yeah.
you're referring to, that's, that's shown on a few recorded plans.
So it's, it could be an old pound and may unlock the key to where Square Island Road's supposed to be.
Right, I believe from the two thousand three endorsement plan, it, it called for just the pile of stones, and then two thousand eighteen, I think they set the rebar there.
Uh, so you wish to withdraw this, or?
Uh, yes.
So... Let the record show that the representative of the applicant has withdrawn the A and R. Oh, do we usually vote to accept the withdrawal or?
I think it may be appropriate to do that.
I get a motion to accept the withdrawal of
Still moved?
Approval not required, plan known as... Didn't that get to be thirty-three? Oh, it does, it does go all the way through to the block, uh, Blackwater Pond Road, isn't it? Uh, lot, map seventy-four, lot one thousand nine. Motion was made, was there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next one.
Thank you. The next item we have, I don't see anybody here. Do you have news for us? Is approval not required, planned for county road and Fonseca way, air GAF Engineering? I think Ken has some...
Action on this plan was continued a couple of days from now, so that the, uh, the status of Fonseca way could be determined. A title search of Fonseca way is that it is now town land. Town-owned land, a private way that's town-owned land. That's how the, uh, town council described it. I think in that case, that it can provide proper frontage for a, a lot, because it is town land, and I don't think that the town would stop access onto the way.
The only issue I would have with that is, I think we'd need some documentation on that, and it inserts this into a subdivision that was covered by a homeowners association, but they would not have to share any of the costs of that association, so...
Which subd- which part are you talking about, George? The Fonseca way side or the other side, the lower part?
The Fonseca way side.
Fonseca way.
Sorry, I was pointing to county road, but yeah, the Fonseca way side.
So, so, uh, Ken, you're gonna find out, council's supposed to get back to you if, uh...
No, council has already made its opinion. It is, it is town land. It's a private way.
It became town land through a tax title?
That's correct.
So there'd be record of that?
Tax title or foreclosure?
Yeah, foreclosure and then tax title.
So there should be record of that taking?
There is, and that, that was the item that identified it as town land.
Now, how do they get, how, how do they get the right-of-way to cross over town land? Town land doesn't make it frontage. Am I right seeing that, Charlie, or?
I, I looked into this a little bit myself, just to, for curiosity's sake. And it never was a part of the subdivision for Fonseca way. So in my opinion, you could probably endorse this. I reluctantly say you could probably endorse it as an A and R, because it does have frontage on Fonseca way, which was approved by the planning board. However, that does not say that they have rights to either get utilities off of it, or drive on it, or anything like that. If somebody was going to, uh, buy, say, lot six B, and have a title search done on it, I think they'd run into that as a stumbling block. But I don't know that that's a reason why you could turn it down as a Form A. I, I say that reluctantly, because they don't think there's anything in the statute that says you can't. But, and it may be somebody's opinion that the town won't object, but I am inclined to agree with you, Mike, that if somebody were to do a title search, you wouldn't find that they had any rights in it at all. And it would be up to them to get the rights from the town if they are the actual owner of the property.
From the building commissioner's zoning?
No.
No, from?
Forest agreement.
It would have, if the town owns it, I believe that it, just my opinion, that it would have to be granted by town meeting vote. That's just my opinion.
So if we approved it, someone may not get a building permit there, because they don't have rights to utilities?
All you're saying is, as a matter of fact, I think there's a statement on here that says you're not doing anything that says it's in compliance with zoning?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there is not...
Yeah, the first endorsement, the first, uh, lines under where, where you would date it, where it says, where hand planning board, it says it should not be construed to be in determination of conformance with zoning regulations and so forth, so...
Can we have a comment before that makes no, uh, determination on whether it is a buildable lot?
Well, you're, you're basically saying that by virtue of saying that you're not construing a determination of conformance with zoning regulations for any of the lots shown on the plan.
But we're giving them a designation as a lot. A lot is designated as buildable.
Well, it, it is, you can't get away from the fact that it did abut the property and it, it abuts the way. And the statute doesn't say anything about, well, just because, um, you abut it and you weren't a part of it, you can't, I don't believe it says anything about not being able to sign a Form A. That doesn't mean that by signing that, that you have given up any of the, um, rights that the town has to enforce its zoning regulation.
So we can create a lot, but it's not necessarily buildable. They still have to pass through all zoning and...
That's, that's my opinion.
Okay.
I think a reasonable approach may be to approve the A and R, and we insert a note into that, that we have concerns about, um, utility access and, and whatnot to the, to the applicant.
Or actual travel.
Pardon me?
Or actual travel.
Yeah, yes, exactly, but make it clear that, that we have concerns that you actually have, would have those rights and, and caution you to move forward at your own risk.
Do your own, do, due diligence.
Yeah, it's, you know, you know what I'm saying, but I think Charlie's right as well.
I, I don't, I don't encourage putting any language in there that isn't in the statute.
Well, I think, I think you're right on target. I think the, the notation here saying that it's not construed to be conforming is self-explanatory.
Yeah.
Here it is. We've approved it, but if you're gonna go build on it, do so at your own peril, peril.
Right, and again, um, you know... Right, and again, you know, a title search, if somebody goes to get a mortgage, I'm assuming the bank would actually look at it from the standpoint of getting a title search to see what, what it actually is, and if they look it up and if they do their due diligence, they probably find that situation, it was never part of the subdivision, then they have to see how they had rights to get in in the first place. And I think that's where the issue may come up and it might be a stumbling block, but I think that's for a title examination to show.
Right, yeah.
And I think that the language on the plan, that you're, you're saying by your signature that you're not saying it conforms to zoning in any way, takes care of the situation. Would you agree, Ken?
It's just that the, what you are saying, it has a proper frontage, and it does conform to zoning in that regard.
It does, as far as frontage is concerned, that's why I'm saying you could probably sign it as an A and R, but you're not saying anything else with respect to whether or not it has access or anything else on this, on that way.
Correct, yes.
That's being left in the open and the fact that you signed it that way doesn't necessarily make it a buildable lot or complying with all zoning requirements, because the zoning says you have to have access to the lot too. And the fact that you front on the very sideline of that road doesn't necessarily give you access.
Right.
Right.
So the zoning department would determine what they tax it at and that would all happen over there, but it would be a lot?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that it's gonna happen in the building office or anything like that. If it's gonna come up as an issue, I think it would come up with some sort of a title search later on. When somebody tries to go get a building permit and go to a bank and get a mortgage, it's gonna pop up.
Yeah.
So, but it could potentially slip through if someone was able to pay cash for the lot.
Yeah.
Without a building permit?
Well, they could still get a building permit, but-
Before, like they bought it before they go to get it, they could be...
Side question, does it seem odd to you that our A and R rules don't require, only require a certain amount of frontage regardless of what kind of frontage it is, i.e. access and, and right to, right to travel on?
Do we say a certain percentage of it?
Doesn't strike me odd as being, having to have certain, certain distances?
The distance-
Says that it has to have it, for it to be signed as an A and R, it has to have frontage of at least the amount that's required for the zoning district, or in the absence of that, at least twenty feet.
Let me rephrase.
Okay.
Wouldn't, shouldn't frontage be defined not only as a distance, but as, onto a property that you have the right to travel on as well?
Unfortunately, in the three, three categories that deal with whether you can sign an A and R, it doesn't, it doesn't say that.
I, 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 shouldn't it though, is my question?
Well, state law, actually, the, the case law has said that there's illusory access, that is not real, it's maybe seen on a plan as, as access, but that was why I questioned this one originally, was that, it was depending on whether or not there was real access to Fonseca Way.
So was it, was it your determination that there is or there isn't? I'm, I'm not sure I'm following you, Ken.
I, I think based on the fact that it's town land, that there are, that the, the public has rights to the, to the land, to access the, the property, so I think that there's rights that are available to the, the landowner for access to Fonseca Way.
Suppose some other entity other than the town owned it, would that make a difference?
Yes, it would.
Oh, huge. That would, that would be, we'd be in the exact opposite situation of our, of our concern last meeting. I mean, our, then our, our concern of last meeting would have come true if that was the case. Because that's what we thought, we thought that was part of the homeowners association at the last meeting.
But they took it...
We didn't know that.
It's, it's not a town way. It's still a private way. That's getting into a, an area of the law that I wouldn't want to try and-
If they went back to the order of conditions or the covenant, after a certain period of time, it became the ownership of the homeowners association, and they probably should have...
They probably didn't.
If they hadn't taken ownership for it, then it would have been foreclosed upon, so...
I'm trying to recall that particular subdivision, it seemed to me that it, the, if I remember it right, the conditions of the approval was that the road was supposed to be maintained in the name of the developer. They took responsibility-
But normally it becomes a-
Homeowners Association was set up, but I don't recall that it said, I think it said in the conditions of approval that it had to stay in the name of the original developer.
So there was no succession?
Right, and the reason that it was, that was done that way, and, and some towns do it that way, is in the case of where a town wants to make a taking for a street, you only have to take it against one individual, rather than a whole bunch of people.
But-
I don't know, I don't know, but that if the town takes it for tax purposes, what that does, that's getting into a whole realm that I'm, don't feel confident in talking about. By, by us saying that, if, if we, as the board said, that we think the frontage is fine and we'll let this one go, I think we're setting up a bad precedent, Charlie, because I can think of three subdivisions on County Road, they're all in the same shape, same thing, this property, they abutted it, they had no access to that when it was a subdivision or being subdivided, all of a sudden now, I can say, okay, give it to the town, then we can put a driveway on it.
The only problem with that, Mike, is that under the statute, you've got to re, give a reason as to why it's not an A and R, and I don't know what that reason would be.
It doesn't have adequate frontage on a way.
Or access, if they, if we haven't determined that they-
Yeah, that determination hasn't-
The town owns it, it doesn't make it a moot issue.
Well, that-
We're not granting it access, we're just saying it, it has adequate frontage on a way.
You're saying it has adequate frontage, I say it doesn't.
Well, that's it.
There's a grass strip in between there, it's owned by somebody.
Is unusable frontage frontage, that's, that's the question.
A private road owned by the town, that's a new one.
By default, doesn't it just become the town's and then the town has to eventually?
It's not a road, it's, it's just land.
But what's the process, eventually the town has to take responsibility for it, because no one else does and people have snowed in and-
As a road, you mean?
Yeah, as town-
The town would have to accept it as a road, a town meeting action.
Town meeting, so who would bring that? The homeowners association, or?
It could be.
But the town doesn't have to, the town can say, no, we don't want it, as a road. We want to turn it into a park.
The common rule is the abut is owned to the center of the road, but this was laid out as a separate parcel that was taken.
Okay.
The interesting question, Michael, my first response was what Charlie said, what's our legal reason for, for denying it? And, and it's, it's all about what the definition of a way is, and, and our only requirement that there be so many feet.
Well, it wasn't part of the subdivision, that's the first.
My, the way I see a way is, is your land touches that way, so you physically touch that boundary. This boundary here, you're touching a piece of land, not the actual road, and you're saying, okay, that's fine, I, I don't think that's, it's not clear in my mind, anyway.
I think, I think the point is that that parcel was never a part of the subdivision, they were an abut to the subdivision and the road layout line came up to their property boundary and stopped.
Right, so now because it's town land, it doesn't give them a right to-
That does not, that, if, if you create a lot like that, or a parcel of land in a subdivision like that, does not give the abut that who was never a part of the subdivision the rights to use that road.
Right.
Now the town has taken it over and I don't really know what that means.
Well, if it hasn't been accepted as a, an actual town road, then what, it doesn't mean anything. It's still, it's still a private road, which means you've still gotta have rights to use it, and if we can't determine they have a right to travel down that road to get to an imaginary driveway, then it, the argument of access doesn't get answered.
That's the int, that triggered an interesting question, is it a private road owned by the town or is it a piece of town property that some people use as a road?
It is open to the public, so it is a, it, it is a form of public way, it's not a private, well, it's private in- I mean, even some private ways, once you're open to the public, you're not long, you're no longer a private way. Same thing with a parking lot, you could have a parking lot, but if the, if the public is allowed to go in and out of it unfettered, it's, it's technically a public way.
But a parking lot doesn't qualify for frontage?
The, the difference here is who's responsible for the maintenance of the road and the utilities associated with that access. What the town would say is that the landowners that have rights on the, on the right of way would be the ones that would be responsible for maintenance.
So, so if, if that's the case, Ken, if you say that, let's pick on the next abut further down, Mr. Barbosa owns, he touches the town land, but all of a sudden you get frontage, that's a buildable lot now. Right, am I right or wrong by saying that?
Right, because he has a woods road to get there.
No, 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 not the woods road, eliminate that, look on Fonseca Way.
Currently, he's landlocked by the woods road, but if you approve this lot, then he creates his-
Rights to get in here through his woods road.
Right.
Which also goes on Windy, Windy Hill subdivision, but now he touches Fonseca Way, it's town property, so he can put a driveway off of there, and that's a buildable lot.
And become buildable just because we approved that.
Right.
It wasn't a part of the subdivision, why don't they just come back with a subdivision plan?
This wasn't part of the subdivision either.
They don't control it, they can't come back with-
They what?
They don't control it, so they can't come back with a subdivision plan.
Ken, do you have a recommendation?
I, I recommend endorsement of the A and R and allow the, the landowner to make the determination and the banks to make the determination as to whether or not it's a buildable lot, but I think it has the access on a way that was approved as a subdivision way by the planning board duly authorized, so it, it, for A and R, it seems to pass the test.
I'm not convinced.
I don't agree with you, Ken, sorry.
Oh, that's true, it, that is one of the conditions is, is on a previously approved plan.
I missed that point.
It's on a way that's, that was created on a previously approved plan.
What about it? That qualifies it as a public-
Again, if somebody were to make an issue of whether it has rights or not, that's beyond the scope of the A and R.
Sure, well, I get that.
But by us endorsing it as an A and R, we're seeing, as far as we're concerned, it does.
I, I think the point's more that-
It has area and frontage, it's a, you know.
I think, Michael, it's a little different, I think it's, as far as we're concerned, it passes the, all the rules and regulations of an A and R.
No, it, I, I don't agree with you.
Well, what Charlie's saying, brought up, I should say, which it seems to make sense to me, that, that the A and R doesn't, doesn't specify, um...
Buildability.
What?
Buildability, it's not, it's not-
Buildability and, and the, and the, and the type of road it has to be, and the, and the legal access and the travel rights that are for that road, that's why I was asking the question before, maybe it should, when, when you do an A and R.
But as Ken just reiterated to you, it meets one of the three criteria that's in the A and R statute. It says it, it's got frontage on a way that was previously improved as a subdivision street. You can debate the point whether or not it technically meets the frontage the way that Mike's talking about, but I happen to agree with Ken that I don't see how you can avoid it, but the issue will come up at a later date, if they try to get access to it and find out that it isn't exactly clear where that frontage comes from.
So by us giving, telling them it's okay, we're creating a hardship for them, if, if anything, they can go to Board of Appeals or whatever.
That was-
No, I, I think it's different than that.
I, I, you're not convincing me, Charlie, I can't see it, I really can't.
It's not, it's not a case where, where just because you're saying it doesn't conform with zoning, that they could get a variance on it, it's not that kind of an issue. It's, it's the issue with what rights came with the town taking that piece of property, does any, any frontage or, or any lot that all of a sudden abuts that become a buildable lot because it is now owned by the town, Fonseca Way is now owned by the town, do they own a road or do they own a piece of land, I don't know. I haven't researched that, I don't know.
Well, if you go down the street to the other, by the same people, fellowship circle, that has since been accepted as a town way and a piece of land under the same circumstances was allowed to-
Also of a different color.
Yeah, I mean, once it's a town way, the, your rights are there.
Yeah.
But this was never accepted, but it is a town way.
So I'm gonna go back to my, my original proposal that we, that we approve it, that, but we insist that all these caveats that are on this document here about the, the endorsement of the planning board should not be construed, that we add one.
You can't add, you can't add a caveat to a Form A.
Why?
That's a condition.
No, not a condition, just, it's not a condition, not, it's, it's just a statement.
These are statements that we put in our rules and regs that have to be on a plan. I thought there was also one that came right up and said, approval of this plan does not-
Demon a buildable lot.
Demon buildable.
Now, only legally, in my opinion, if that's an apostle, rubber stamp and it's gone down the road.
I think legally-
Apostles isn't a buildable lot, it doesn't say that, we said it's a buildable lot.
I don't think there's any distinguishable notice between a lot and apostle when it comes down to it.
I hate to say you're wrong on that one, but I think there is.
I, I always thought there was, but in practice, I don't see it that way.
In, in practice, but when we went to all them seminars and Holy Cross, they said there is, there's a big difference between apostle versus a lot.
So let me go back to my point then, that we approved the A and R and we asked Ken to have a long discussion with the people that submitted this thing, to make sure they understand the concern that-
They're gonna tell Ken whatever he wants to hear.
What?
They're gonna tell Ken whatever he wants to hear, you know, that's the name of the game.
Well, I mean, the heads up is good because if they're wishing to sell this, they may wanna resolve this issue before they put it on the market.
I, I think that issue should be resolved before we give it, the label as a lot.
I wish we had that luxury.
Yeah, we do, we just deny it, I don't, I don't think it has adequate frontage.
That's the question, talk me, help me understand, I don't know that, what grounds you have to do it. I, I agree with you, this is, this has a potential to be a big problem.
Sure is.
And we should, and we should do what we can to avoid it, but what legal grounds do we have to deny this A and R?
It doesn't have frontage on a, on a way, it doesn't have, this, this, that's apostle of land, okay? It doesn't touch the road, so in other words, you're telling this person, because you're laying the butt this land in front of you and it's town land, you can do anything you want in the front, basically, right?
No, we're-
Yeah, it does.
We're saying that you have a hundred, we, you have the required footage for frontage on this private road.
No, I, I'm not convinced, because like I said, I've been around here a long time, I can think of three subdivisions right off the bat that has the same circumstance, and it's gonna come back and bite us in the butt, so I bought a piece of land in the backside, I'm gonna buy Mr. Barbosa's piece of property and I'm gonna put a, a driveway off the end of it and put a house in it, maybe two or three. I put a subdivision road off of that, it's town property, I can just do it, right?
It is a private road, right?
Yeah, one before us a little while ago, Squirrel Island Road, same thing. When that property got subdivided, it was all owned by a common person, the, the lower part, that straight line, purposely, the road was never pushed to the end of the property line, it went right through it and it's privately owned, and now it's in front of us, they wanna go and, you know, put a subdivision on there and move a road around or whatever, that's how, that's how that shit starts, comes back and haunts you later on, it really does. You can do whatever you want, George, move ahead, whatever, but like I said, it's, you're not gonna get my vote on this one, I have to deny it, sorry. You know, these carpetbaggers come in this town, they raped this town before and they come back and they're still raping it. They don't live here, they don't care. Can't do it.
Well, I don't think we, I don't think that's a proper discussion of this.
I didn't say nothing bad, did I? I mean, you can't even say, you know, nah, don't work.
We don't have any more time on this one, right?
Make a motion, put it up for a vote.
No, we don't, two days.
We can sit here all day and go back and forth, it's seven thirty, I got plenty of time, George, like I said, my mind's not gonna be changed.
Well, if you, I mean, if, if you're not gonna change your mind and you're ma, you're making that statement, then there's no point talking anymore, right?
Right, yeah, yeah, some people like to talk though, but you know, like I said, not me.
Any discussion? Any discussion? What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Deny the Form A.
If we deny the Form A, are we in a position of legal, a position where we can be sued for not...
No, because we're only exercising our opinion.
Where it meets...
Mike has his opinion of the frontage, which is his opinion. I still have my doubts about whether or not whoever thinks that they're gonna gain frontage on that road has a legal right to travel it, to get to that frontage.
Right.
So, I still have a little bit of a problem with it, too, to be honest with you.
It certainly has to be case law on something like this.
But I can't see where we would get ourselves into trouble denying it based on the grounds that we're not 100% comfortable with Mike's version of the frontage and my version of whether or not you can legally travel that road together.
What recourse does the applicant have? If the applicant can go resolve those issues, that he does have access and he does have rights...
Then it'd be completely different.
But do they have to refile? Do they have to pay additional fees again? Do they...
Yes.
And how much is that?
Hundred and fifty plus.
Lawyers are like 400 bucks an hour.
If we sit on this plan for another, how many days we got left to go on this plan before we make a decision?
Two.
Two days, right? So, we're gonna give him a constructive grant?
No.
Give him what?
A constructive grant. If we don't act on this in that time, it's a go as it is.
George, could I just reiterate the three provisions for an A and R? Just put it out there. Here's what the definition is. It's a division of a tract of land into two or more lots. However, the division of a tract of land into two or more lots shall not be deemed to constitute a subdivision if at the time when it is made, every lot within the tract so divided has frontage on, A, a public way, or a way which the clerk of the town certifies is maintained and used as a public way, or B, a way shown in a plan thereto fore approved and endorsed in accordance with the subdivision control law, or C, a way in existence when it became effective, having an opinion suitable grades with, et cetera, et cetera. So, those are the three criteria under which you sign an A and R.
Who snowplows that road?
Let him finish.
So, it simply, you've gotta go back, I guess, if you want to get specific about it and deal with what frontage is, then you'd have to go to the zoning bylaw and see what the frontage definition is in the zoning bylaw. If it meets the criteria for frontage, it certainly is on a way that was approved and endorsed by your board.
Is that in here?
Under Article 16.
16.
Definitions?
Lot frontage. Lot lines are in the case of corner lots, the distance between one side lot line and the midpoint of the corner arc length.
What page is that?
Article 16.
What page?
127. Lot line front, the property line dividing a lot for a street right-of-way or on a corner lot, the owner shall designate one street line as the front lot line.
In the zoning bylaws? Oh, 127, sorry.
The property line dividing a lot from a street providing access to the lot measured from one side lot line to the other. In cases of corner lots, the total shall include the distance between both side lot lines and the radius measurement of the corner, if applicable. So, it's the property line dividing a lot from a street that provides access to the lot, and it's measured from one side lot line to the other side lot line.
Provides access is the key.
It says it provides the right of access?
No, it says providing access to the lot.
I think until the town actually takes it, it's not accessible. I mean, we can approve it...
Takes it as a street, you say?
As a street. And maintains it. As of right now, they wouldn't have any rights, but you're saying we have what we need to approve an A and R, but we're leaving it up to them to figure out if it's buildable or not.
Kind of where I'm leaning.
But if we approve the, but also, we know that, you know, what we say of an approval of a lot that is this close is probably gonna become buildable, because they're gonna say the planning board approved it. So, what is left? And...
And really, why shouldn't it be buildable?
Yeah, when you come down to common sense, too...
Would that lot be subject to participating in the homeowners' association?
No. Why should it?
That would be the glitch that I see, that if they decided they wanted to have the town accepted, and there was $10,000 worth of work to be done to bring it to that standard, there's nothing...
Right, there's nothing that's...
Opposing that on this property unless, I mean, maybe the whole homeowners' association was never set up and...
No, there was one. I believe it's a matter of record, George, but I wasn't able to download the whole thing, so I can't refer to it.
So, should we move on?
What's the pleasure of all this?
I think we should see where we stand. So, I'll make a motion that we approve the A and R as written.
Is there a second?
Motion lost from no support.
That kinda answers the question, doesn't it?
I make a motion, we deny?
I'll second that. Let's vote.
You find it as a subdivision is what you wanna say. That's the option you have. It's either a subdivision or it's an A and R. And so, you're saying it's a subdivision.
No, it's definitely not an A and R, because I think when you sign an A and R, you give up a lot of rights. You know, you can't condition it, for one thing. That scares the hell out of me. Squirrel Island Road, we just told a proponent here, come back as a subdivision, you know, we could work with it, but otherwise, you put anything you want in an A and R. It doesn't mean spit. You know, that's welfare for the developer. So, you second my motion?
I second his motion. I mean, it doesn't matter, Mike. I mean, we're just gonna vote. We should not look at seconding a motion as a vote in either positive or negative direction. It's just a call for the vote.
It's just bringing it, right, bringing it to the table.
So, there was a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I think we add that. Keep getting that backwards.
Yeah, that's...
But be clear now...
Talk to Robert, he got it backwards.
We're voting to deny the A and R.
Yes. On the grounds that the lot doesn't have accessible frontage?
Yeah.
Is that a...
That's the way I see it.
Yeah. If there's no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The plan is denied.
So, Ken, I hope that you have the opportunity to explain our concerns.
Absolutely. I've already had a long discussion with the engineer on this one.
Who is it?
GAF, Bill Madden.
He's gonna be fired up.
Happy to see this.
What is the request for covenant release for Sherburne Way?
Yeah, I got a letter from Mr. John Reedy.
What was that? Oh.
From Mr. John Reedy regarding Sherburne. Too many microphones. The Sherburne Way.
I think our guys were sleeping in there.
No, that's Ken's.
I'm gonna have to mute.
Oh, we're getting an echo.
Yeah.
Try it again, Ken.
Now, I think this'll work. People online can't hear, but this was a request by an attorney for Sherburne Way to have a release of covenant. This was a subdivision that was approved in 1993. The covenant was never released, a bond was never put into place. The road was constructed and houses were constructed on, it's a four-lot subdivision. Two houses were built on the four lots. Two of the lots have the same owner, and one of the unbuildable lots remains on the access way as well. They've requested that a release of covenant be provided as a result of the time that the building permits were issued and the covenant was negated as a result. I just pulled out the subdivision file, and I think it's appropriate to have a site visit inspection of the improvements that were made to determine whether or not the covenant, the subdivision construction was constructed according to the plans that were approved.
That was gonna be my next question, was an inspection made of the Sherburne Way?
This property was just in front of us very recently for the removal of the property line.
Yeah, from the, on the western side of the lot.
Right. They just moved it a little bit. Remember that when it was in here? It's the same.
So, they could create two lots as a result. And now, they wanna try to sell that lot, so the covenant is cloud on the title.
It's due a site visit. Right?
Right.
Well, I think an inspection would be more appropriate for a release of covenant, correct?
Usually the way it goes.
So, we ask Charlie?
I can't hear anything here. I think Ken was muted.
Yeah, we were getting echoes from it, so... Can you hear that?
I can hear you now, thank you.
Normally, upon release of covenant, we have an inspection done to see if the work was done in accordance. I know it was suggested that the timeframe will enter into that. So, either, was that a paved way or was that gravel?
It's a paved, the record missed, Thomas Hearn, Site Design Engineer, Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm. Yes?
It's a paved road, it was constructed back in 1993, I believe, '94. It's been constructed and changed just lines, a paved way approved by the planning board. The bond evolved and settled, drainage is in, and they wait for a long time. And it just may be enough to be actually, they're building permanent all the lots, and build this house, and lots a lot of things will have cooled. Everyone's been there, watching quite a time, and it's a pretty good shape, still a good shape.
So, what does the terms of the covenant say, Ken? And what would we be inspecting for?
I couldn't tell who he was.
I'm sorry, but because of the echo here, the recording, I can pick up your name, could you?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Thomas Hearn, Site Design Engineer.
Did you get that, Mark?
I heard something, yeah. The covenant is a standard covenant.
Still kind of agree that Charlie should do an inspection.
Yeah, my question is, what are we inspecting for?
Charlie's opinion as to whether the drainage isn't back in place.
Inspecting a subdivision road as it was designed and constructed.
So, we're talking just the road and the cul-de-sac at the bottom of it there?
Right, is it essentially a dirt road leading up to it?
I go down there all the time. I know that road really well.
Yeah, but you're not an engineer.
No. Don't be a wise ass.
It says that upon completion and construction of the ways and installation of municipal services as specified herein or on or before March 1, 1995, the planning board shall release this covenant by an appropriate instrument duly acknowledged. Failure to complete construction and installation within the time specified herein or on such later dates may be specified by vote of the planning board. With the written concurrence of the applicant, shall result in automatic rescission of the approval of the plan. Upon performance of this covenant with respect to any lot, the planning board may release such lot from this covenant by an appropriate instrument duly recorded.
Is there anything in the file about it being signed off back in 1995?
No, I didn't see anything that said it was signed off.
It was never signed off on, Mr. Chairman, before the road was completed and they never filed for a release of covenant. And that's what we're doing now, trying to say...
Is this typical, Charlie?
But if there was a inspection done at the time and a sign-off by whoever the consulting engineer was at that time, then we wouldn't have to do anything more.
We still need a document to release, release the covenant that's on record.
So, the next move is to ask our town engineer to go do an inspection?
Well, that's been past practice, is they file for release of the covenant.
Good.
A review of the roadway and associated utilities is done, and if it's good, covenant gets released.
We need a motion to ask him to do that?
Well, either Charlie has done it, municipal maintenance have done them in the past, whoever... We can work out those details, but all we need is a report on the inspection, and we could take this forward.
You need a motion?
Why not?
Pardon me?
Why not?
Why not? Who do we ask? Charlie or municipal maintenance?
Ask for an inspection.
So, a motion to have the planning board request an inspection of Sherburne Way to see if all the terms and conditions of the covenant have been met.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The reason why...
Mr. Chairman?
Say that again.
Uh, oh, go on, in a sec.
Yes.
It'll come up again for a vote at the next meeting?
It should happen that quick, yes.
Okay. You, maybe I'll have a good evening.
You, too.
The reason why I asked for an inspection was I'm gonna ask municipal maintenance, Dave Menard, and typically, Dave asks Charlie to come out as well on these inspections, so maybe have both anyway.
Hey, call me, can I tag along?
I don't care.
Please, would you, let me know.
You need something to do, Richard.
Call Dave.
I'm gonna get him.
Dave Menard, call him.
I've gone with Charlie a couple times.
If I'm gonna do it, I would like to see the file, though, and review that before I actually go out there.
All right. The next item is an A and R for Borrego Solar Systems.
Richard, you're gonna get a dog or something.
He's ignoring me.
Would you like to do the A and R in conjunction with the site plan, or...
I can. I'm actually not Borrego's representative for the A and R. Although Zach was unable to be here this evening. I mean, he had some correspondence with Ken. My recollection from the last meeting was that the only, I was changing the line type from a solid to a dashed line, which I believe they did and resubmitted.
I'll find out. Have a seat, you're up next.
You wanna deal with the A and R now?
Yeah, the A and R is in contention on the site plans, is it?
No.
So, we can act on that.
This is Rick Rice's plan with the... This is Rick Rice's plan with the dashed lines put in place or the hard lines over the top of it. They're being combined.
Got it.
That was...
This is not for the A and R.
It looks the same to me, for some reason. Just added tax lines to be removed.
These lines here, tax lines are being removed.
You wish to look it over?
Charlie, you got copies of this?
Yes.
Oh, good lord.
That was your request, just the dashed lines?
Just leave those there and straighten them.
You got paper copies there too, George? You got a couple of paper copies there, too?
Yeah, that...
There's only one copy there.
Do you have one?
So, here we go.
Oh, there we go.
Here we go.
Copy of this, of this A and R.
You need a paper copy?
Right here, we're not doing any...
Yeah.
You are.
George, I don't see anything wrong with it, no. Who says that, that upper lower line, right? Yeah, they've put dashed lines in there now, and they've shown in the center of the plan one area, it says combined parcels A, B, and C with a total area. So now it's become one parcel according to this plan, which is what it wasn't showing before. It was continuing to show three separate parcels with solid lines. Now it's... Now it's the perimeter of the entire thing, which is fine.
What are you looking for, motion on this one, George?
Yes.
Entertainer motion, we endorse Form A for Borrego Solar for 140 Tiunit Road. Slots 111, 01,000H and 112, 1,000, lot 1,000 with lot 111, 1,000F.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Charlie, had you a chance to review this letter that came in today before the meeting?
Hit the ejection seat? Oh, there he is.
What's that, the mile line?
If answers that other one, isn't it?
No, I'm still more convinced, George.
A Sharpie?
Right, that'd be perfect.
That's all I have, is a Sharpie.
Phil Madden used to give them to us before, a long time ago.
He did?
He cheapened up.
They didn't last very long?
Well, they're almost past expiration date.
Might as well use it. Uh, let's see, 19th? Tried to do it as lightly as possible, so I wouldn't...
Will Zach come for the mile line?
So I'm actually just texting it. Yeah, he'll grab it from you. He just texted me back. Zach will come and pick it up.
Next, we have the continued public hearing on the three solar projects. And what was still outstanding on that?
Sure, so Stacy Manahan with Beals and Thomas. First off, starting with the two Tahanet projects, I'd like to request a continuance to your next hearing. We did not submit revised plans for those. So we'd like to continue, and then, Ken, I will also email you a request for extension for the decision, because I think we had requested it for tomorrow's date, so just to...
Good, thank you.
Okay. And then... And what is your next hearing date? Or do you want me to go through 27 Charge Pond first?
You can do that, fine.
Okay. So at the last planning board hearing, we talked about a few remaining items on the 27 Charge Pond Road project, namely, changing from pole-mounted to pad-mounted, ground-mounted gear, trying to eliminate the stormwater basin within the 50-foot setback at the site entrance, and generally narrowing up the site entrance, eliminating the tree clearing within that Y trough of the access roadway. And if I'm recalling correctly, I think those were the main items. So the board had given us permission to coordinate with Charlie, which we appreciate very much, and that was very helpful. So our engineer coordinated with Charlie, we were able to eliminate the stormwater basin and just reuse the existing upland depression that's already at that location, so that we won't need to clear the vegetation, which, as you can see, does narrow the site entry fairly notably. We did leave the trees within that Y area. Borrego has proposed some plantings along the pad-mounted gear, which lies east of the entrance, so out of the kind of line of sight, and then also black vinyl slats within the fence for some additional visual screening. There'll also be a stockade fence by the pad-mounted gear as well. So I don't wanna speak for Mr. Raleigh, but I believe that he and our engineer reached consensus, and hopefully we've adequately addressed the remaining comments from the last hearing. And there is a... Nine copies of the full-size plan set as well. I passed out a two-page letter, the updated hydrology calculations to reflect the change in the stormwater basin, and then copies of the full-size plans.
By the amount of paper, it's a good thing we left some trees on that lot.
Fifteen sheet plan sets, nine copies, it's a lot.
I just need this one.
You know, we're paperless society now.
Yeah, paperless society.
Was this a tactic?
No. I apologize. Usually I like to submit a little bit more ahead of time, but these were hot off the presses copied this afternoon with the PDF submitted this morning.
Did conservation do a decision, or...
They did not... They did not have a quorum at their last meeting, so it was continued to... And I think it would have been continued anyway, honestly, but it was continued to this Wednesday, October 21st. So I'm hopeful... I'm not aware of any outstanding items that we have with them. I think we've fully addressed everything, so I'm hopeful that they will close.
Hey, you see that cloud in there? Is that a real cloud in that overview?
I have one here for you, if you want. I'm interested in understanding the removal of drainage. I'm interested in seeing a little more detail around the...
The basin.
Yeah, let me make sure I say it right. Infiltration basin eight.
Yep.
You've eliminated that, and you're gonna go to something that's kinda already there?
Correct. So one of Charlie's comments earlier on that I don't think we were fully following what the suggestion was, but then when Jeff and he spoke, it ended up working with the design, was that there's an existing depression at the site entry, to the kind of left of the site entry as you enter. We had been proposing a basin there because the stormwater was running there, but looking at the hydrology, eliminating that overflow that Charlie had mentioned from that Y area, if you recall before, we had an overflow and kind of a swale to the east as well. We reran the numbers and were able to eliminate that basin, which I think was the original comment.
Richard, if you look on Sheet C 6.0, that's a detail of the entrance area, and it shows everything that I discussed with Jeff. Right, in that left-hand part of the plan, there was a drainage basin that was within the buffer zone on the left-hand side of the driveway as you go in, and it opened up a fairly sizable area there. They had to remove the trees in order to put the drainage area in there. By removing that drainage area, we pulled the tree line right back to the edge of the road. Also, there was a... If you look on the plan, and if you look on C 4.1, just flip to that quickly.
C 4.1?
4.1. Yeah. You see infiltration basin number eight? It's a long, narrow basin that's just a short ways in from the entrance. That's... Is that six? I'm sorry.
It's six, yep.
It's six, not eight. Originally, that entire area between the road and that basin was cleared.
Wait on me, Matt, please.
Right, right here.
Yeah. Okay, okay, thank you.
With the revision, they've maintained all the natural vegetation in that Y now that is between the road and that storied... And that drainage area. They've maintained the overflow, stone riprap overflow, but in the event that that should overflow, the drainage calculations show that it won't even in the 100-year storm. But if it should, for some strange reason...
For the 200-year storm.
Yeah, the two or the five or whatever. It will overflow by virtue of that riprap swale or weir that's across the top of it and simply flow into the vegetated area that is now maintained. So by doing that, we've eliminated the need to construct an additional swale below that to carry it down to the drainage area that we eliminated. Also, you'll notice that they pulled the tree line on the right-hand side in as well. That was another feature, that it was laid wide open. Now, if you were to go up Charge Pond Road and look in there, your visual field of view is narrowed considerably from what it was. You'll still see a little bit of it from the road that goes straight in, but you're gonna be blocked on both sides now by the vegetation on both sides of the road. The next thing they did was eliminate the double overhead utility lines. So now they have a single pole which comes across Charge Pond Road, because all the poles are on the other side. So they come to the north-westly side of Charge Pond Road with a single pole, drop from that pole, go underneath the entrance to now several pad-mounted transformers that are behind the tree line and are now surrounded by chain-link fence and junipers to block the vision of that.
This is a chain-link fence that you're putting the plastic strips in as well?
Yes.
So what they've done really is enclosed... They've pulled that whole entrance in substantially and have still been able to maintain the drainage patterns that they had on the plan with the exception of the one at the entrance, and what they did to accommodate that was to build a stone apron across the low point of their access road, so that the water could travel through that stone and naturally get to the southerly side to the low point that's there and just flow as it does today. So in my view, for what they've done here, it's a vast improvement of what the other plan was. They've accommodated all the things that I asked them to look at. They were able to redo the calculations and everything. So I'm satisfied with what they did here on this plan. I think it's a good job.
So I read the letter this afternoon, and my response was I think they hit everything 100%. That's how I reacted to that.
That's my opinion. I did pick up... Uh, I did pick up one little detail that maybe they can correct in the meantime. It's on detail sheet 6.0 for the bituminous concrete pavement. I think it should change that layer of asphalt for the top from one inch to at least an inch and a quarter. An inch of mix will simply unravel. Uh, snowplow hits it, it's gonna tear it up.
Yep.
Yeah, right at the top.
Yes, number two.
One to the left. Yeah, that one there. It says three inches of base and an inch of top. I'd rather see it be a two and three-quarters base and an inch and a quarter at least to the top.
Okay, so two and three-quarter base.
Just a little more thickness.
Two...
Other than that, with the things we talked about on the plan, I'm happy with it now.
Is there a reason the driveway had to be that wide instead of just for construction purposes or...
For turning, turning radius and I think to match up, um, well, really for turning radius where you hit Charge Pond. Um, two and three-quarter base and one and...
One and a quarter.
Okay.
It's, it's a total of four now, so I'm trying to keep it at four.
Okay.
You will be, of course, subject to a curb cut permit from...
Yes.
Dave Monade at municipal maintenance.
Yep.
If he has any, uh, issues with the thicknesses, then please abide by whatever he wants. It's his street.
Okay. And we're certainly amenable to that being a condition, that it either be changed to what Charlie indicated or to whatever municipal maintenance requests. Right. And, and I'm not sure what may have changed since we last spoke. I know, I think originally we had proposed a, uh, wider construction and then narrowing for permanent. And I thought one of the comments was to make that more of a permanent condition with the pavement at the access, but I, I don't know if I'm misrecalling.
I'm not gonna have you redraw the plans.
Okay.
I guess working it out with the director of municipal maintenance would probably be the best bet.
Sure.
Were there any other open issues other than the ones that, um, we discussed? Uh, where I'm going is, is I don't think there's any more issues.
No, there isn't for me.
The only outstanding one that, that I can think of is that they still wanted to use the Wareham recycling place for the place to dump off all of the materials, should they dismantle it in the future. And I've made comments on all the Borrego projects that Wareham recycling is nowhere near big enough or could handle the volume of materials they'd wanna dump there.
We had submitted a revised, um, decommissioning plan that I thought specified a Rainham facility. Is that different than the recycling?
This, this one, throughout all of the documents, said Wareham recycling. When you go through the dismantling documents that they produced...
Right.
It continues to say Wareham. It's not appropriate for, for what you've got here.
Yeah, I know that the, well, I shouldn't say I know, but my understanding was that the intent was to change it. I thought we, in one of our last or prior supplemental packets, we had changed it to the Rainham recycling. And I wouldn't anticipate that Borrego would have an issue...
I don't...
Specify.
I don't have an answer to that.
Yeah. We could just specify to match the, the prior approved ones, which I know is what Borrego intended to do because that's what they told me when they sent me the, the plan, was that they made it the same as the prior approved ones. Obviously, there were some, I think, differences that the intent was that they caught them, so...
Is there a comment in here or not?
I do have, so I have a supplemental letter from September 28th. I'm just looking, I think that has a decommissioning estimate attached.
Yes, in, in section one, it does allude to the fact that the town of Wareham recycling is not a, um, not equipped to handle such a volume.
Yeah.
Right. And so the, the, but at the end, there should be an attached decommissioning statement, and I'm just looking to see if that specifies Rain, uh, Rainham.
Make down the costs?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there was, there's a one in there that alludes to additional trucking.
Rainham tran, so number 12 on page four of that decommissioning statement, "All material will be trucked to the nearest transfer station that accepts construction of material. The nearest transfer station is Rainham Transfer."
I have a question about the costs. Are these today's dollars?
So I did not prepare the decommissioning statement, but I am going to explain what my understanding is. It is today's dollars, but then there is an infla, and Charlie can probably speak to it better than I, but then there's an inflation rate applied to it as well.
Over a 20-year.
Right. And so my understanding is that it's a, a fairly reasonable slash conservative.
Well, the only reason that I questioned it was I was looking at some of the, like, general labor cost, 25 bucks an hour. 25 bucks an hour for a, a general labor 20 years from now is probably not gonna buy you a guy.
That's one of the reasons that in previous ones that you've approved, you had a, uh, special condition in there that you would revisit the costs every five years to see what the inflation rate was, see if it needed to be adjusted. Not just stretch it out for a 20-year period, but to renew it again if it looked like after five years was a substantial change.
Do, do, do we have some sort of a, a tick system in place for, for triggering a review or is it just...
I don't have the answer to that. Maybe Ken does.
Just corporate memory.
Corporate memory? Is that what you said?
Yep.
So in other words, we're probably gonna forget about it until the day comes that it gets decommissioned.
Well, it depends on how good the, the Microsoft calendar is that we're using.
That's how I do it. Um, so just to answer one of the earlier questions, so there was the subtotal based on their estimates. Then they added a one and a quarter percent adder to get to the new total of 238,698. And then they applied a one and a half percent rate of inflation for 20 years, which brings it to $321,492.14 for Charge Pond.
They face them too south, huh? No adjustment for... Say they're facing 180 degrees, they're too south. There's no 15-degree adjustment, just...
Sorry, I don't think I'm following the question. Of the, of, of, are you looking at the layout of the panels themselves?
Well, yeah, that's the description on the front page. And 25 degrees seems awful steep, but... Must be what they like. Right on the cover sheet, listen.
So, I'm sorry, where were you looking, Mr. Chair?
On the description of...
Oh, here.
Yeah.
Yes.
The older, uh, like, hydronic solar panels, you adjusted for true north and, and a little different angle, a little flatter angle. This is probably, uh, better suited for winter operation, I would think.
Right. Yeah, I do think there are differences in New England. And then I know the technology itself is changing so rapidly as well. But I don't know that that would affect kind of tilt angles and, and orientation.
Did you submit details on the, uh, energy storage facilities?
We did in terms of the noise question, thank you. That was the other item that came up at the last meeting. So we included the information in this letter. It had also actually been included in the application, but I think we didn't link it to the distance from the property line. So essentially, the noise reduces to ambient 100 feet away from the equipment. And the closest piece of equipment to a property line for this site is about 118 feet away. So it, it'll be ambient by the time you reach the property line.
Has the fire department already been trained on firefighting with these storage batteries?
These are lithium batteries, so they burn hot.
Well, I understand that. But has the fire department had any training on, on how to deal with them? And is there any specialized equipment that might be required?
There's specialized training and they, uh, they have to go through it.
And who's bearing the cost of that?
The fire department.
Why wouldn't we ask Borrego to participate in that cost?
That's another condition to put on there if they, they agree.
Well, the, the only reason I bring it up, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, you live in this world more than I do. But I believe there was just a solar array done somewhere on the Cape where the contractor paid, paid for equipment and training for the fire department as a condition of the approval.
That's a great idea.
Um, I'm texting Borrego as we speak, if that's okay? Um, I don't know if they've been trained already or not. I know this is not the first battery storage, um, system in Wareham, so it may be that they've already had the training. They didn't comment to that effect in their letter, but let me, um, just check with Zach. He's responded that they'll cover it all. So it seems that that is an acceptable condition.
It would be reasonable. Hopefully, we, we'd never have to take advantage of the actual equipment, but the training would be...
Right. Well, and hopefully if, even if, on the off-chance that something did happen, the containment systems and the internal fire suppression system would work so that the personnel didn't have to do anything. But I thought that would be his answer, but I just didn't wanna commit him without checking. So yes. Oh, and he actually mentioned that he thinks they already are from the previous projects as well. So there might have been some agreement in place before.
Right. So we could just check with the fire chief, make sure that they have...
Sure.
That, that our, our fire department has what they need. And if so, then it is, becomes a moot point.
Sure. And we have, um, you know, included them on these various iterations of the plans as we've submitted them, but they had issued comments pretty early on, so... With, you know, the standard Knox box and site access comments.
Which is what they asked for, yes.
Right.
Turtles can't be over six inches high.
They're actually very good diggers, I have to say, which I should not admit on public record. But as a child, I did have some eastern box turtles because my parents did not realize they were endangered. And they lasted one night before they dug out of their pen, so...
You can give them any blueberries.
So can we get out of, do we need to exit public hearing?
Well, you certainly can, as far as I can see. I did text to see if there was training required on the...
On the batteries?
Hmm. I haven't got an answer yet. You got one?
Well, I mean, I'm looking right at it. There's all kinds of, you know, on the internet, on specialized training for lithium battery, storage batteries. I would have to go reread my book, but I'm pretty sure that there's a big section in there concerning these and the hazmat. When I, when I took my hazmat classes, there was a big section.
Didn't just say run the way?
Well, that's the first thing they tell you, actually, is, is run. Read the book later, run first. And make sure you run upwind.
Upwind, downward.
I thought that was for bears.
Upwind.
Upwind? You, you wanna be going the opposite way of the...
Of the wind.
Of, of the chemicals, yes.
Oh, I thought you said upland. Like you're gonna go up a hill. How do they blow down?
Yes, there's, there's suction right here on fire fighter safety and response training for solar powered batteries, solar, solar storage.
If we left the public hearing open until you completed the other two, would that create a hardship for you?
We'd love to close 27 Charge Pond tonight so that we can move forward and focus on the other two, if that's acceptable.
That, that's what I mean, if we closed it on 27 Charge Pond, is that...
Yes, yeah, we would prefer to close on 27 Charge Pond and then leave the two Tahanats open.
Any comments, any...
I think we're ready to move forward.
Second. Is that a motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah, motion to close the public hearing, please.
Second. Seconded by my Baptiste. Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Can I just say, I, I can't tell you how pleased I was this afternoon to read the, to read the letter.
We were as well. So, thank you for saying that. It's always nice when it works out that, you know, we can fully accommodate.
I mean, usually, usually I read those kind of notes and there's a little give, there's give and take in every direction, but this was, like I said before, it was 100, 100% of everything we asked for.
It was very helpful being able to coordinate directly with Mr. Rowley. And I recall that from the prior projects as well, that once we were able to connect directly, we can understand fully what's being asked. And I think that was very helpful.
And Charlie, thanks to you, 'cause you're the one that brought those up. And, and all the, all these improvements, which are huge, our duty to your diligence, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie. Do you have any draft thing or...
What then?
I have a draft decision here. Only have one copy in the file. There are nine conditions. We added one with the training.
Equipment. Training and equipment.
Yep.
Have to add equipment.
And equipment, yeah.
And I don't know if you wanted the, um, uh, top course and binder course as a condition or just, I've noted it, so I'll convey it. But, and the coordination, for the coordination with municipal maintenance.
We'll probably put it in as a condition on it now. So we can reference these, this set of plans, these, this date. The conditions also include a five-year review of the decommissioning bond.
And Ken's gonna remember.
If I'm around.
All right. Construction shall be in substantial conformity with the approved plans dated...
October 16th?
It was submitted, um... What was the initial submission here?
Um, April...
Yeah, April 27th?
April 27th? No, um, May 28th. They have a couple earlier internal revision dates here. May 28th is the first version that you folks saw. They have a few earlier dates that I think were internal.
Inspections of site shall be made by the planning board and/or its representative for all site work, including initial... including initial site clearing and grading, stockpiling of loam and topsoil to be made on site for future restoration, excess road construction of initial, construction of initial clearing, grading, placement of base material and dense graded surface materials, swell and loam and seed of slopes, loaming of seeding of all areas in accordance with the approved plans, and the array fencing, gates, turning areas, and final cleanup. Item three, calls for inspection shall be in accordance with item two above, shall be with a minimum of 24 hours' notice that an inspection is requested. Failure to call for timely inspections may result in a delay. In the approval of work completed, may require correction before proceeding. No changes to the approved plans shall be made without the approval of the planning board. The board may at its discretion determine if the changes proposed require a public hearing to modify the self, self, uh, site plan approval, or if the changes are minor in nature and would require no public hearing. Any subsequent modification to site plan approval issued by the planning board shall be recorded in a similar manner as the original site plan approval with a copy of the recorded document provided to the planning board by the petitioner. Planning board may require posting of security if an occupancy that's kinda... Decommissioning proposal presented is approved, subject to the condition that the costs of each item shown shall be reviewed every five years following final approval, and the submission of the, of a copy of the recorded site plan approval. Why is that? And added to the submission of a copy of the recorded plan, recorded Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, and to the planning board for the file. The former security be posted for decommissioning shall be approved by the town council and shall be automatically renewable with the town of Wareham cited as a beneficiary for security proceeds in the event of default by the owner or successors entitled to the facilities. Decommissioning proposal on file, town of Wareham office is hereby incorporated by reference to their entirety in this site plan approval. Support, training, and equipment for the fire department on solar arrays and energy storage.
And purchase of equipment for the, for the purpose. And then approval by the municipal maintenance of the road construction details. Right, that covers it?
Was, was that decommissioning document revised?
Yes, so that one included with the September 28th, I only saw a reference to Rainham for disposal.
Okay, but I was concerned more with the date for that revision, so that when we're talking about the decommissioning document on file, that we've got the right one?
Yep, September 28th, 2020.
The train's awful busy tonight, isn't it?
Seems like it.
Mr. Chair, may I make one request for the fire department condition, if you would consider it? But it's okay if not, obviously. For the purchasing of equipment, something along the lines of mutually agreeable or, you know, commercial, commercially reasonable.
It goes to the new fire.
90-foot ladder.
Yeah, we would like a matching tower for the...
Even a rescue truck, too, to go with it.
The other foot. Applicant will finalize road opening details with municipal maintenance director. Does that sum it up?
Just say a curb cut permit's required, too. Typically, a cost associated with that permit.
Is there a sidewalk there?
Yeah.
There is.
Oh, 'cause I saw your, your inclines.
Yeah, our ADA.
Being a sidewalk. Uh, if there's no further conditions, I would look for a motion.
I make the motion to approve the plans as submitted with conditions for 27 Charge Pond Road, Wareham Mass.
Stay for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate all the effort you've put into this.
We'll have a copy of this filed with the town clerk tomorrow.
Great.
The only thing I see is Russell's not included in the...
Mark, mark him down there, and we'll, we'll do some, some editing of it as well, to make sure all the dates are correct.
And then we won't have to look at our scribble.
Right.
And then I think just a continuance date for the Tahanets.
Now, we met tonight because the 26th was supposed to be town meeting, which it's now not going to be. Do you wish to meet next week, or move it to... The 9th of November? Either both dates workable for you? Will you have your information?
November 9th, you said? And what was the other date?
Say, we scheduled tonight as an off, it's an off night.
Right.
Because of town meeting, but they're not gonna have town meeting, so I just asked the members if they wanted to meet next week, or does that work for you, or?
We probably will not have the Tahanets done by then, but if you're meeting next week, I'm sure Zach would prefer that I request a continuance to your next meeting, and then request another continuance if we don't have it done, just on the off chance that we get it done.
Should pause you.
Doesn't matter to me. One Monday night's the same as another.
I like coming in on Mondays. When do, when do you wanna have it, Georgia? I'm sorry?
Next Monday, 26th.
Either a week from tonight or tonight, depending on the board's pleasure, whether... A week from tonight is our normal meeting night.
Fine.
Everybody's good with that?
Yep.
So, I would look for a motion to continue the site plans for 140 Tahonet Road and 150 Tahonet Road.
So moved.
Second.
October 26th, at 6:00. Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then just since I am fairly certain we won't make that, what's your, would it be, November 9th would be the next one after?
Just let us know, we'll, we'll continue.
And the next one after that is the 9th?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you all very much again.
No, just the cover page. There's the dates on it.
Yeah, I was down there, um...
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Just take the blank space there, the blank square. Yeah.
But you must have been here before me.
I was there in the morning. Was he playing with a leaf blower?
No.
I brought him my leaf blower, so he could blow all the leaves out of the garage.
There was no leaves in there.
I think they're supposed to pour today.
Looks nice.
I know it. Yeah, the ceiling came out really nice, yeah.
Thank you. No, yours is a good enough.
Where you store all these papers?
In the, in the big storage area on the basement floor.
Oh, oh. Down there.
Where I used to eat lunch when I was going to Pilgrim School.
Pardon me?
Where I used to eat lunch when we were going to Pilgrim School.
You were down there looking at the Minot Forest school plans, and I came and saw you down there, and you, and you were telling me about how you felt so familiar there.
Yeah, used to walk across the street from where the, Pilgrim School is where the library is. So, we used to have to walk across the street, rain or shine, snow, anything.
Is there anything else on the agenda?
Cafeteria Pilgrim, was that added later?
No, not now.
We never, never ate at Pilgrim.
I know the house.
Cafeteria, Cafeteria, the town hall is where we went for lunch.
'Cause when I went there, there was a cafeteria there, but it was in the back corner. It must have been an addition.
Well, you're younger than me.
Yeah, we didn't have to kill lunch on the way over.
Motion to adjourn, George?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's the fastest vote of the night.